Okay, good evening everyone. We're gonna get this meeting started. Okay, good evening. Hi, welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. This is Tuesday, October 6th, 2015. This is a special meeting. No action will be taken by the board. Purpose of this meeting is to solicit input from the community with regard to our strategic plan. And to make this formal, since we do have a majority of the board members here, in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 2nd, 2015 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. And I'd like to welcome Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Ms. Bogdanowski?
Here.
Ms. Sante-Fonte?
Here.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Dalla?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Dr. Fresson?
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Great.
If we can rise forward, I'll just... [applause] My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I wanna go to this microphone so I don't have to stand in front of the podium. Thank you for coming out. As we mentioned, this is the first of three meetings for our strategic plan. About five years ago, as Dr. Schiff came on board as superintendent, he issued an excellence in education. Based on that, we adopted and adapted that as our strategic plan about five years ago. And the strategic initiatives that were included included one-on-one technology, revamping our foreign language to have a wider range and also to allow students to graduate with a very high, with an even higher proficiency in foreign languages. Also, from a capital planning perspective, we had to upgrade all the facilities employing a, with the ESIP, which allows us to, we've invested millions of dollars' worth of capital to get a more, more efficient school property, and we're able to do that without adding any taxes to the local taxpayers. So those were a couple, a few of the initiatives that we've had. We've been very successful in leadership. For the district, it's been recognized internally amongst ourselves and also externally. So we're at the stage now where we're coming towards the end of that strategic plan period. Strategic plans are typically in about five-year cycles, and so we wanna see where we wanna take the district next. And part of that is a commitment on the board to make sure we get input from the community and all stakeholders. So that's from parents, taxpayers, students, community members that have nonprofits or businesses that are in the area, and see what we can do as a, as a district to improve, to continue to improve the education of our kids and also provide value to the, to the district. So as I mentioned, tonight is first of three public input sessions. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had input sessions from the board members themselves in the committee meetings. Last week, we had a meeting with administration to hear from them, what they saw would be valuable to the district, and now, in my opinion, is most important is the, is the community input. So tonight is about, it's entitled Hillsborough Pride. So this is what's going well in the district, what are things that we're proud of, and that'll form the basis of things that we should continue or amplify. The next meeting in about two weeks is where we wanna be, envision the future five years from now, which gives us an idea of where do we wanna go for the next step. The third meeting is action plan, to say what, what can we do to get to those, to that envisioned future. And then lastly, in December, will be a dating meeting where we're able to take the action plans and all the work that's been generated, and then overlay that with, with data, so both in terms of economic data, in terms of student performance data, so that we can say what would be a realizable and appropriate goals for the different action lines that are there. So with that, we're gonna have, meeting is gonna be facilitated by Dr. Charles Ivory. But first, I wanna hand it over to Dr. Schiff so we can have the word superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Wow, thank you so much for coming out on an evening to spend some time with us talking about what I hope will be our most ambitious aspirations for our students. Not our most muted aspirations, but our most ambitious aspirations. What can we envision for our students in the district that will set us far apart from other districts throughout the state and throughout the country? Strategic planning is a time actually to kind of blow the lid off of our district, to look at our district with different eyes and to dream big. So before I introduce our facilitator, I would like to thank you for coming out, spending time with us, and to encourage you to think big. It's now my pleasure to introduce our facilitator, Dr. Charles Ivory. Dr. Ivory is currently the executive director of the Educational Information Resource Center. He has served as superintendent of schools in both Montgomery, I'm sorry, Monroe Township, as well as an S, as well as a county superintendent. He started his educational career, I believe, in 1975.
Oh, 1965.
1965. Excuse me. As a social studies teacher, right?
Oh, as a teacher, I started in 1969.
1969 as a teacher. Let's give Dr. Ivory a big round of applause. Welcome to our...
Yes, it really is. It's like 47 years now I've been doing this kind of work. It doesn't seem possible. You're shaking your head. It, it just flies right by. For all you youngins, really enjoy every moment, every year of your career. I, I am still doing this work because I love what I do. I love education. It keeps me young. I, I really miss being with the youngsters because I've retired three times. I'm not very good at this. And the first time was 14 years ago when I retired as a superintendent of schools. And I walked in those shoes for a long time and absolutely loved my work. I knew it was just, it couldn't get better than what it was at that time, so I knew it was time to move on. I've been at EIRC for 14 years as the executive director, and it's, it's really been terrific. We work in all 21 counties of New Jersey. We are by law a school district, but we don't operate as a school district. We do not have children, but we're referred to in technical terms as a local education agency, LEA, which is the designation given in state law to public school districts only. So we really are an anomaly. We're a public nonprofit. We work in 38 other states and we work in 20 foreign countries. Most of the work we do in foreign countries is related to child assault prevention and prevention of child trafficking. Our newest client is the Republic of Dominican, which you've read about recently because of the awful storms and hurricane that they've been experiencing. And we've done a lot to, to try to work with our clients down there to help them through that. Our largest client is Japan, where we have 2,000, 2,000 people who do training in child assault prevention. That's almost unfathomable, but that gives you a sense of what's going on in the world around us. We are about to enter China to work with the, believe it or not, the government of China, in 19 provinces to help them create similar programs because this is a massive issue around the world. So that could aside, that's just one of the things we do. But I really love the work I'm doing with you tonight, and that is strategic planning. All of the work we'll be doing over these four evenings and beyond, when we assist you with the writing of your plan and doing some other survey work, is built around work that I actually did as a superintendent of schools. And, and I'm proud of this. So this is, this is work that's built around real practical strategies that have really helped school districts move forward. We've worked in 40 school districts over the last three and a half years doing this kind of work. There are 600 school districts across this small state of New Jersey. We are an amazing mixture of all kinds of configured school districts, from elementary to regional high schools to K12s like Hillsborough and like, like I was superintendent of in Monroe, down in Gloucester County. Of those 600 schools, I would bet that right now, today, this month, there may be 10% of them, maybe 10%, I'm being generous, who are involved in strategic thinking about their, the future for their youngsters and for their communities. And you should be very proud to be in a community where your board members and your administration are sufficiently courageous that not only they want to take on the issue of strategic planning, but they want to open it up in an audience like this, where everyone is invited. I know that there's been an incredible amount of recruitment done, and that by the end of the evening, I hope you will feel so positive about your experience tonight that you will be interested to bring someone with you at the next meeting, so that we can double the attendance at this, this program. Because the more people we have, the more effective we can be at reaching out to the community's thinking, the teachers' thinking, the board's thinking, all of you together to create a vision for Hillsborough. I, I'm, I could be wrong, but I don't see any youngsters here. Do we have any students? No. You need to bring your children to the next meeting. We have youngsters generally as young as fifth grade who come out and do this work, and they are absolutely amazing in their thinking and their contributions that they make. Who knows better what's working in our schools than the youngsters who are in the schools every day? They have incredible perspective, and they'll, they'll feel very comfortable speaking out here, I can assure you. I've seen it happen time and time again. If we have some youngsters, if you have children, or neighbors, or friends who have children who are in college now, or are out in the workforce or the military, please invite them back in to talk about what we might have done for them to help them be better prepared for the challenges they are facing now in the next stage of their lives. And it's so important that the high school youngsters are telling us the same thing about middle and then intermediate and elementary. And for those youngsters in elementary to talk about their dreams and their expectations because that has an impact on everything that we're doing over these four evenings. I also wanna promise you that this is the last night you're going to hear me make a little bit of a speech, like a lecturette or something here, because this process is different than most likely what most of you have experienced when you've done strategic planning before. This is about working groups. It's by design that you are at tables in groups of four, three to four to five, whatever it might be at your table, and that you're also mixed. And when I'm finished giving you directions, the first thing you're going to do, if you haven't already done it, is to introduce yourselves around the table and understand not just your name, but you're here because you represent parents, general citizens in the community, interested in what's happening at the schools and what the future might be, your administration, your board members. You see that there are no board members sitting together. As role was called, they're spread out as many as we had, they're at that many tables. And that's really important because what your board members want to do is to be sitting with you and hearing from you directly what your thinking is about the future. So that in their, when they take their responsibilities once a month to meet, two times a month to do their business, and every year when they're setting goals and analyzing where they are with those goals, they wanna keep in mind what the community has told them and what will be put together through the strategic plan. So it's very powerful what we're about to embark on. Your board president did a great job of summarizing what the four nights are. I would just add that while the meetings do build across the four sessions, they are also discreet, meaning that if you cannot make the first meeting, you can be just as productive at the second meeting. And if you weren't at the first three meetings, coming to the fourth meeting, you can still be very productive in adding new perspective. So we're very careful to make sure that the meetings are sufficiently discreet that you can walk in at any time. That's why when you leave tonight, hopefully you will be able to recruit other teachers, other parents, youngsters, administrators who are not with us tonight, and have them come out and join us in this process. We will create minutes of every meeting, and as you're going to find out tonight, you'll be doing a lot of individual thinking and recording, and you will be doing group consensus recording. Every idea that is on that chart paper in front of you at the end of the evening will appear in the minutes. Those minutes will be public document so that anyone who's not here has the opportunity to read them and see what we've done, how we've done it, and what our resulting thinking was at the conclusion of the activities. That will happen for every one of the nights. That's important because people who aren't here at one meeting tonight can read those minutes and really have a sense of what we talked about tonight coming to the second meeting and so on. So we will have minutes for every meeting, very important to keep in mind. We also are collecting your email addresses because we want to be able to create a list sir, so we can send you those minutes if you were here, and also to remind you of the date of the next meeting, so hopefully we can encourage you to be here for that meeting. We started about, I'd say, two or three minutes late tonight. We want to start next time exactly at 7:00. The meetings end at 8:30. They are 90 minutes. End of story. My job as a facilitator is to make sure you stick to the task. So I go back to my early teaching days, and I become a teacher very quickly in terms of giving directions and expecting you to meet my expectations about timing. I will remind you as we're going through the activities about how much time you have remaining, three minutes, two minutes, one minute. I will ask you to conclude, and I will ask for absolute silence when we have reporting going on because that's about respecting your fellow community members who are here tonight in this process. And so that everyone hears the contributions coming from every table because every one of them is very valuable. And because you're going to be asked on every one of the four meetings to be summarizing out loud what you heard and what some of the takeaways are from each of those meetings. So I only have a few rules, and that's one of them. The other one is that what we'll be doing every night is pure brainstorming. And by pure brainstorming, I mean there are no holds on anyone's ideas. Every idea is accepted, every idea is praised and appreciated. So we never tell somebody, oh, that was a crazy idea that you just put on the board. If someone thinks we should build a swimming pool in every school, then by golly, it needs to show up on the list. Now, do we think that's going to happen? No. There's not a snowball's chance. However, if someone really believes that, they, they should be respected to be allowed to bring that idea forward and put it on paper and mention it to you without feeling criticized. Okay. Tonight is about Hillsborough Pride. It's about what's working well in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. That's what tonight is about. People will say, and I had this happen, someone will say, well, Dr. Ivory, and I prefer Charles, quite frankly, I came here, I have a problem. Well, I can refer you to the regular administrator or teacher to solve that problem, but we're not going to talk about that tonight. However, you cannot talk about what's working well without thinking about what you could do better. Because one thing for sure I've learned in 47 years of doing this work is just when you thought you were there, you're not. Not in this field. Because every day, every year, we learn something new about the research that tells us how, how teaching and learning is connected and what we could do better in the way we use and implement a technology and integrate it into our instruction. Everything we do, every day, in every classroom could be done better tomorrow. And that's our challenge. So, we can't talk about pride without talking about how we're going to ratchet up tomorrow, what we might do better about what we're doing today. So that's where some of your concerns come in. I know when I go around the room, I'll be circulating around to see you, hear the conversation, see how you're doing in your group, that I'm going to hear people talk about some of those issues that you have, about the schools and your child and, and whatever it might be. And that's okay. But remember, your focus tonight is what's working well. So what I'd like you to do first is to introduce each other at the table. Again, if you have not done that, understand who's with you tonight and what their role is at the table. After that, I will ask you to look at the placemat that's in front of you. That's what this activity is called. It's a cooperative strategy that's used in business, it's used in schools and classrooms. It's a good planning strategy. You have a center rectangle with four quadrants around the perimeter. Now, if you have four people at the table, it's easy. Each of you has a quadrant on the outside of that curve. If you have five people, you're going to take one of those sections, divide it in half, and voila, you now have five. And I wasn't even a math teacher, so, but my wife was. So I've learned a lot about math over these years. So I'm going to ask you, in, in, in your own mind and silently, to jot down in your section around that placemat, your individual thinking about points of pride. What's working well in the Hillsborough Public Schools? That's what you're going to do. And I'm going to stop there with directions because there will be other pieces to this activity that will ultimately lead to a presentation by every group of what you've done in the center rectangle, but you're not there yet. Okay? So if you would introduce yourselves and jump into individually writing down your ideas about what's working well. There are some writing utensils on the table. If you don't have enough, please let us know. Lots of people bring something down, lots of kids have done that. Thank you. People who haven't even started writing. So you really need to get those ideas down because we're gonna move quickly through these activities because we're gonna have a lot of reports, and I'm pushing to end this at 8:30, so I wanna make sure that we hear everyone's voice during that last section of the activity. So I'm gonna give you about two minutes, and then we're gonna call this activity, part of the activity closed and move on to the next. But it's not time yet to discuss the ideas, although I know there are people around the tables talking about your school interests and issues, and that's okay. That's why we're here. We're closing in. You have about 30 seconds to finish this up. I'd like to give you one set of directions, one time, and it looks like this. Many of you have been discussing some of the ideas around your table, and that's a good thing. But this is how I would like you to do it, how I would like you to process the discussion. I would like you to give each person at the table a couple of minutes to present the ideas that they have written down in their section of the placemat. It doesn't need justification for the idea, but it is perfectly acceptable for people around the table to ask clarifying questions. And I know that you're probably not going to say the two words you wrote down, you're probably going to take a, a little bit of time to explain what it is, but we are, again, limited, so please make sure, we wanna make sure that over the next 10 minutes or so, that everyone at the table has an opportunity to share their ideas. While you're listening and focused on each person, be thinking about the emerging similarities, trends, common thinking that are emerging as a result of that, that sharing of, of ideas. And in about five minutes, I'll check in and see where we are and, you know, how much time we have. You're probably gonna need at least 10, maybe 15 minutes to do this. Okay? Questions? Okay? Thank you. Okay. So most groups have gone around their table, and I don't wanna hold you up. For those who are still finishing up your conversation, you can do that when you, after we, after I deliver these instructions, and then you can jump into the next, next phase. So there's been lots of really great conversation around the tables. I know that there have been incredible positives, and lots and lots of them shared from across, across the room. And I know that there's also been discussion about some issues that a few people have about this program or that program, or articulation, those kinds of things. And that's, that's really very productive. Your next challenge is, having listened to each other, to identify three to five ideas that you would like to bring forward that reflect what's working well in Hillsborough Public Schools. Now, what do I mean by consensus? Because this is not a three to two vote at the table, or a two to one vote. If it was up to me, I would tear up Robert's Rules of Order, and I would only bring it out when we couldn't agree on consensus. We should always be operating on consensus. I don't care, from the board to the PTOs, to the teachers' association, everybody should be working real hard on consensus because it goes like this. In schools where I've worked, we've used what we call a fist to five. And a fist means that the idea that's on the table right now, I can't support it. I, I, in fact, I, I don't like it so much that if you agree, if you decide to do this by an eight to one vote, or a five to four vote, I'm gonna work really hard to sabotage it. And we've all been in groups where we've seen that happen, right? When we have a vote in a meeting and five people are for it and four people are against it, what's going on in the parking lot right after the meeting? The four people are figuring out which of those five they can get to and change their mind, so at the next meeting, we can reverse that decision. It happens all the time in the world of Robert's Rules. So we don't want that. And in districts where I've been superintendent, we worked really hard at doing consensus at the building level and at the district level and at the Board of Education. Because there are very few decisions we make that are so emergent that they're life and death. And so at the end of the meeting, or during a meeting, or we're getting hung up on reaching consensus on an issue, or where we have a five-four, or a six-three, or even an eight-seven-two, we ask this question, what additional information might we provide that will help those who are not on board with this idea to understand better what the majority of us really believe is the right direction, so that you will feel comfortable getting to a three? And a three means, and this is what we're always looking for, you know what a five is? I'm, I'm in. This is my, I, I love this idea. We're always looking for a three. And what that means is that it's not my idea, wasn't even on my paper maybe. I think it's okay, but it's not something I think is a priority. But because the group really feels that, that, that good about this idea and is convinced of my work, I'll go along with the group, I'll support you, but I'll be back if it's not working. And I, I, for me, even in the role where I am right now, those are the kinds of people I want around me. I don't want people who just vote yes for everything I say and do. I want them by consensus to come around and support what we're going to do, but if it's not working, I want them to come back and tell me. Now, nothing we're deciding tonight is so dramatic that it's going to be a problem if you, if you have some issues. But over the next couple of nights, it will get that much more important in terms of the perspective that we create around vision and around the kinds of activities and action steps we might take to achieve that vision. So it's important that we think about consensus tonight. So by consensus, I want you to just agree on three to five points of pride. If you have two, that's fine. If you have six, that's okay too. And put them into that center rectangle. I want you to listen to each other. You've, I know lots of you have been talking about this already, and you recognize some of the emerging trends that are coming up at your table, common thinking. But get them into that center rectangle, and we're going to try to conclude by five after eight, so you have about 10 minutes to do that if you need it. Shouldn't take real long, not given all the conversation. And I'll be checking in. Thanks. You have one minute to finish this activity. Many of you are drawing conclusions to this exercise, but you've had time to talk about your ideas and draw conclusions, so they can get those final ideas down on paper. One minute. Okay. You're doing great work. We really appreciate. The three of us have had the opportunity to kind of roam around and listen. Great discussion at the tables, really deep thinking, and it is very much appreciated. We've been admiring a lot of the contributions being made around the table on the thinking, and I think you're going to enjoy hearing the report out. So this is what we're going to do. We're going to ask that two people from each table come to the front of the room. One of you is going to hold up the chart, and the other is going to read off to the rest of the group what your consensus points of pride are, what's working well in Hillsborough Public Schools. Okay? So if you can begin doing it, there are a couple of groups that are still finishing up, so we'll let them finish up while you're gathering. We just want to line up in front of the stage, right here at the apron. Now, when you finish making your report, I would like, when you exit in from the front, take your chart paper, and on the end of the table, all the way on the corner here, number one, the number one table, just lay your charts, or layer, it doesn't matter what order they are, just lay them face up on the end table. Okay? What I'd like is, we're going to work from the center, and then we're just going to go back and forth and bring group from this side, group from this side, until the ends collapse to the center. What I would like you to do is step up to the microphone, and the person who's speaking, speak well into the microphone, so we can hear it on the tape, so that it records. And if the other person would stand just a little bit to the front, so everybody, and you turn, you know, so that your reader can see the chart, whichever side you want. Okay? There you go.
Okay. My name's Mary, and we are table eight, with Stephen and Michael, my assistant. We came up with, in order, what we feel is the most important and positive aspects, would be pride in the Hillsborough Schools, well-rounded offerings, which means inside and outside of the classroom, and of a school day before and after, community and parent involvement, and use of technology.
Thank you very much. Give them a round of applause.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dennis, and I'll introduce my co-presenter to Arvind, and we're from table number seven. I'm going to try to do this from memory, because we wrote a pen, so it's a little tough. So first off, the World Language Program, the robust World Language Program. Second, our grouping is a little bit the efficient and effective use of technology in the classroom, and then as kind of an accompaniment to that, the balance and responsibility of social media and email, especially in communication between the teachers and parents. The, speaking of teachers and parents, the excellent teachers, administrators, and child study teams that are in the Hillsborough system, and then finally, the early literacy and math programming, including AYSI.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sheila. This is Laura, and we have Paswell, and we're at table five. So we also agreed that technology and the training of technology is something that we should be very proud of here in Hillsborough. We put number two, the fact that we have an incredibly caring community that is seen in multiple ways in the schools. We have very clean schools, we have consistent policies and procedures between all the schools, and the openness of the teachers and the staff to whatever our students and their families need. And then number three, the individualized approach. Each child is seen as their own entity, and not, they're not all shut together as a grid too, and we think that's really positive. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we're from table three, and I think the three things that we believe are working well for our school district is, of course, the community, and by that we mean that our kids are in the elementary school for the first five years, and that really gives them a sense of community and belonging, and before they really move to the intermediary and middle schools. So that really is working well for our kids, because they really have a place to call home for the first five years. Certainly, technology, where our teachers, as well as the students and parents, are embracing that really well, considering we just implemented that, you know, over the course of the last year or two years, and there's really a vested interest in everyone utilizing that appropriately. And I guess lastly, it's the strong academic, as well as extracurricular activities that are offered within the high school, which include really your, whether it's your foreign language program, whether it is your sports, athletic, music, and the various clubs. So it really gives the students a lot of opportunity to look outside of just their academic curriculum per se. So I think those are the strong things that we believe are working well for this school district.
Excellent. Thank you. Would you take the chart or run it far table? Thank you.
Yes, I'm Mark, and I'm over with table six, and Gillian, and I'm sorry, Lorian. And we came up with the following: communication, and technology, also the special services for children with special needs, the focus, the overall focus on the students throughout the school, and their achievement, and the staff.
Terrific. Thank you. Great job.
Hi, I'm Cheryl, and we're with table four. This is time, and our list is more of a bucket, because we had a hard time, because there were so many different things that we appreciate about our schools. So the first list, first on our list is teachers and communication. So it's the quality of our teachers, their ability to communicate with the parents, and really engage with not only just the students, but with the parents and with the community. We also agree with technology. We all found that having the Chromebooks in their school, and having the tablets, it's been an excellent addition, and we're really excited and happy about that. One of the things that we haven't heard yet is the nutrition. We're really, really happy that we have a lot of different variety with our school lunches, so that as working parents, we don't have to worry about what our children are eating at school, because they have healthy options. And then lastly, the category is program offerings and support, because there are so many different offerings that are available on the entire spectrum, from children with special needs, to children who are in the REACH program. There's just so many different offerings that are available, so many different programs that are available. And we really agree that it's just, it's a great, I don't know how to put it, it's a, it's a great program, it's a great selection, there's a lot of variety.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Neil, and my wife is Joel, and we're at table 13 with, we had an amazing conversation with also Shari and Danielle. Again, awesome conversation. We're all educators, but we're also our parents as well, so we're both wearing both hats. And we talked about technology and the initiative, and, you know, the tablets that are at the kindergarten level, and the one-to-one Chromebooks that are at the upper level, and the partnership with Google that we have. Again, all amazing things. We also talked about the math curriculum, and a couple of us mentioned that, you know, we have young children, and when we moved here, actually, when I moved here to the district, my child was struggling with math. But it was a good thing, because the math curriculum was very rigorous. And in her previous schools, she was not, so I think that's a positive. I like a challenge, and we all agree with that as well. And finally, all of us mentioned the school culture, and the dedication of staff, the PD that's offered, and the staff development. So those were the three things that we all agreed on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy, and this is John. We were at table two with Colin and Judith. And the five things that we expressed pride to it was the effective communication from the schools and the districts, especially using social media, and on the website, and via the newsletters, very effectively done. Echoing a lot of what we've been hearing, the strong variety of extracurricular, as well as academic offerings throughout all of the schools, committed and caring educators with the teaching staff, especially a high quality of special education programs, and what we offer our students for special needs, and the investment, and the teacher-to-student ratios. And then finally, great parental involvement and supportive communities, and the partnerships that we have with our local communities. We were talking a little bit about the scholarship offerings for our high school students, and how the local community really rallies in providing a big investment in our students to go for further educations.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Haley. I'm actually vice president of the board, so thank you again for coming. This is possible. So our consensus was communication all around, top to bottom, adoption of technology, lots of positive feedback about the special ed program, guidance counselor involvement from parents to students, and then from the parents to guidance counselors and vice versa, and the teaching staff and the administrators, and our ability to not only just attract them, but retain them, was something that was a common theme throughout the table. So, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dina. This is Neoph. We've got Angie and Tom at table one with us. Again, I think we reiterate, what everyone else has said, the first thing was technology, the use of the portal, and how that communicates back and forth between the teachers and the parents, even if it's a check, lets people keep in touch with them, having email or word all the time. The one-on-one initiative. Also, we talked about the global exposure, so that students are communicating with other school districts and other states, and other children are working together in a different way than they ever have before. We talked about community, which I think is what we're probably most proud of in Hillsborough, is the staff and the administration, and home and school, and the parents, the support that we have in this district. And the other thing was extracurricular, is that we've got a variety of things to be proud of, our sports, our performing arts, our robotics team. We have a lot of things that put children in the next level for a major college. So lots of other things, but they were the main, the main points that we were excited about.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brett. This is Diane. We were table 16 in the back. The first one, that everyone has technology. We're really happy with the Chromebooks and the tablets, and the children learning that. Overall, the overall reputation, the rankings of the schools have been great, and every report that's come out, and the overall ranking of the community. The teachers are extraordinary, at least all the teachers I've come in contact with that really care about the students. A lot of them are homegrown, so they understand where the students come from in the community. The student programs, both the after-school programs and extracurricular activities, and the diverse community, and diverse school, and how it's continually grown. That's what we got.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with me, Mary Ann, and we come from table 10 with Robyn and Jean. My name is Jennifer. We talked about many of the same things this evening, that we have strong exposure to and use of technology, it's just been paramount in these last few years, of strong teachers, really the hard work that all the teachers put into their day to make sure that the children are learning. The programs that address students' needs, no matter what a student, where a student comes from, the background of that student, all students in Hillsborough can be successful. And then finally, we said there's such strong communication between the schools, the family, the community here in Hillsborough, and we feel like we can all come together as one to really assure the success of all of our students. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
We're from table 15, and they expect me to read my writing, so... We cited extensive extracurricular activity programs of very high quality, extensive use of technology in the teaching process, and last but certainly not least, great appreciation for skilled teachers who adapt to the learning requirements of the students. That was our point. Thank you.
Hi, we're table 12, and my name is Leigh. This is Dez and Kathy. And like everyone else, we said technology is a huge point of pride, and how we're a frontrunner in technology, and other districts look to us to see how we're doing it. Energy efficiency, and using energy efficiency as cost savings, and our teaching staff and our curriculum, how diverse, and how well our programs work, and the dedication of our staff.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Maria Christina, and here we go, we represent table nine. Again, like many before us have said, it's the people, the technology, academic arts, and athletic, and culture. And just with the people, it's really everyone. It's the way we all embrace, engage, the quality of the teachers, that was number one for many of us, parents and administrators that sat at our table. We can't say enough about that. The technology, the infrastructure, how seamless it seemed to be from our side receiving it, but also the way the children have embraced it and are using it to improve and enhance their learning. And also, again, the teachers providing those resources to our children and to the families. The STEM program, awesome program. If you haven't been involved, you need to get involved. It's an incredible program. The academics, the English support, the math support, everything above and beyond what we can afford, tax paid. And the culture, the culture goes to the community, communication, community, culture, all of that. We all work together at different levels, the partnerships with farms, hospitals, and seeing knee surgeries light, and it's a great opportunity for us to be here, and there's a lot of pride in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
Hi, Michelle and Sandy. We're from table 17. We reiterate the same sentiments about technology. We also will add that we love the library systems in all of our schools. They're fantastic. And we love the way the HSA, and schools, and the parents all work together. It's just, it's great to see all the involvement with the teachers, and the staff, and the parents.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to bring it home for the confusion. From table 11, I'm Joe, and Arella, and Valerie, and Steve from table 11. Similar to what has been said this evening, for our pride, the community, the strength of our community, and all the resources for children, both in our schools and around our community, we saw as a great strength. It brings our kids to school ready to learn, and active, and wanting to learn, and wanting to be a part of the school, and that seems to be something that flows from school to community back and forth. Technology, of course, our leadership in technology, and how we're using technology to get kids collaborating and engaging with one another, and the teachers, is great strength. And then the diversity and quality of our educational programs, as we just said a moment ago, we started listing everything from World Language to REACH, for our most advanced students, and our advanced placement, to all the supports for our special needs children. It just ran the game, and we just kept coming up with one program after another, the strength and diversity of our programs. And finally, the quality of our staff, from teachers to support personnel, and the leadership in the district, we saw as a great strength, and has moved us forward. So, thank you.
Really excellent work. Really excellent work. And well articulated. Thank you to everyone who we just listened to. They just did a great job articulating the thinking that came from each table. But let's take a minute and share some of... But let's take a minute and share some of what you heard. What were some of the themes that emerged tonight? And Kia has a microphone for some of you in the back, and then I'll just repeat some of what we hear up front, we want to make sure that it's able to be picked up through the recording. So what are some of the things you heard?
I think it's loud and clear that it's community, technology, and the program, the curriculum.
Programs for the youngsters, the technology, and the communication. And communication in what way? Somebody, what do, what do we specifically talk about relative to communication?
Teachers.
Teachers to the families?
Yes.
And we also heard that vice versa was the word that was used, that we talked about, we praised the communication then back from parents, and the ability of the classroom teachers to pick that communication up. Thank you. What else? What other themes have we heard?
Special ed programs.
Special education programs, yes. Across the board, the integration of youngsters with the initiatives to, for inclusion, really came across a lot of tables. Other themes?
I would say, over and over, just the pride that we seem to have, and that speaks volumes to the fact that we are very involved parents, which is huge, and obviously we're successful.
Hillsborough pride, that's what tonight was about, what's working well, and it was very obvious at the tables, common themes coming up, and a lot of pride in the community. Anyone over on this side?
Well-rounded offerings for all, but also individually, what they're asking.
Well-rounded offerings, accessing, so that all kinds of youngsters from all different corners of the community can, and at different grades, can access a variety of activities and programs. We talked a lot about your extracurricular activities, your arts programs, music programs, a lot of pride in that kind of work going on. Tell me, go ahead, one more.
Just to piggyback on that, I think, I think we talked about how well we work because of our size, because we have so much that we can offer, but also in spite of the size, the level of differentiation, individual student attention, offerings for everybody. So it's really kind of the best of both worlds, which is amazing.
And given, given the size that has, and in spite of the size maybe, even where you've been able to provide a lot of direct communication and articulation of programs and ideas, very powerful. Tell me something about the process. How did it work for you tonight? Being at the tables in your groups, did you meet people you didn't know before?
Yeah, I just found the discussions very stimulating. I found the discussion stimulating, I found it was an opportunity to express things for all of us that were on our minds about what we, what we take pride in, and it was just nice to meet a nice group of people, cooperative people.
Thank you.
I think we are just, everybody meets the diverse, and from, I think just everybody in the table coming from a diverse background, whether, you know, educators, or providers of attendants, you know, just from parents, it just brings a different perspective that perhaps, you know, we don't think of.
Yes.
It really helps us to now open up our minds, do what else, right, we're proud about, but what else we want to also do as a, as a community.
So the diversity at the tables, having mixed people from backgrounds, as well as professions and roles in the community, very valuable to stimulate a lot of good thinking. Any other contributions that perspective? Right behind you, Kia.
I cannot just, you know, piggyback on that, even though we know that we're all from different backgrounds, you know, we have different ages, do different works, but what I find out is that we all care about one thing, and that's our children. And it's very comforting knowing that we have a large group of people just, you know, spending our time and achieve one single goal.
Thank you very much. I think that summarizes it. Well, let's, one more in the back, all the way in the back.
I've lived in this community my entire life, and I think it's awesome to hear all of the wonderful things that people said. But I also think in strategic planning, we also have to have the ability to look at what can be done better and what's not working, and I'd like to see that being a part of strategic planning, because it's easy to say what's working. And I also think we need the ability to bring up some of the things that could be done better.
So thank you for the segue, because that takes us to the next challenge. And I said I was going to share with you before we closed down tonight, what the question, what the challenges were the next meeting. Some people have been asking, well, how do we get to that strategic vision? So this is the question for the next session. If we were here three years or five years from now, we were all together talking about what had been accomplished in Hillsborough Public Schools in those intervening, during those intervening years, what would make us proud to say that we have accomplished over that time as a result of this strategic planning? So set yourselves out five years down the line, looking back on the work that you would hope had been accomplished in Hillsborough Public Schools. It's a backwards planning way to get to that vision. Think about what you would have been proud that has been accomplished in Hillsborough Public Schools during those next five years. Okay? That's going to be the challenge at the next meeting. We'll have an activity to facilitate that, but when we complete the evening, you will have a very strong sense, not only of what that vision is, but we will, between the second and third meetings, take your consensus work and identify the goal areas where you have told us you would like to focus in terms of moving forward in Hillsborough. So we will meet that challenge at this second meeting. And I hope that the other challenge we started with, that is bring someone with you. I hope that you've enjoyed tonight sufficiently, and you felt positive about the process and the results of tonight, and understand where we're heading, that you will come back, but bring someone with you. And I'd like to invite our administration up and our board president, would you like to close down for the evening? Thank you all, I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
I'm super into this, see if you might have a couple. There you are, all right. I had, I had the fun, I had the fun job of floating around and listening in, I sat at a couple of tables here and there. The level of engagement is just incredible, and the, you know, so, we got about fifteen tables, sixteen tables, where people haven't known each other, got together, introduced themselves, but as, as gentlemen as well, as we stated, even though they're so diverse, they do, everybody's sharing a common passion and value, which is the children's education, and getting the most from that. So, love the level of engagement, I just want to repeat, the next steps, this was kind of the feel-good, you know, I was unenergized hearing, hearing all the, all the accolades and the excitement and, and the pride that everybody here has for our school district. The next meetings are, is going to be the interesting one, that's where, where do we want to go next? So, where do we want to amplify things that we're proud of, or things that we want to change? I'd like to think a couple years beyond that, so we're going to implement this over five years, but the impact is going to be for the five years following. So if we've got a kid saying in first grade, we're going to implement things over five years, and then the five years after that while they're in high school and when they graduate, that's where that impact will be felt even more so. So that's where I'd like people to think even further. So, just to remind everybody, and please bring as many people as you can, the next meeting is going to be Wednesday, October 21st at 7:00 p.m. And then the third public comment meeting is going to be on November 18th at 7:00 p.m. also, and then the last one, which is the data, is Tuesday, December 8th. So mark that down, we have it on our website, sign up if you haven't already, and bring, have other people sign up or bring them along.
In terms of bringing the friends, do you prefer that we have them register, or can we just sign up, okay?
So the question was, is it, is it, is our preference to have them register or just bring them in? Both? If we can, if we can have them sign up, that just helps from a logistic perspective to make sure that we've got the right setup, the right number of tables and chairs and that type of thing. I think what we'll do for the next meeting is we'll, we'll mix it up, so that people aren't sitting at the same seat on the bus. Or, or, people are probably going to naturally gravitate, and you're going to take different sign different seats, so we'll, we'll do that up. Yeah.
For the December 8th data, is there an opportunity to use technology for webex?
Oh, good.
I understand it may be challenging for the workshops, but December 8th.
That's an interesting concept, we'll have to check it out to see how we can pull it off. So, we are, we are, we are, we do have a lot of technology, we'll have to see if we can do that.
It would be a first.
It would be a first, so we'll see what we can do. Okay. Just from the formality of the meeting, we have a formal public input session, I think this entire meeting is public input, but if there's, if there's any other public comment that, that anybody has, now's your opportunity. Again, we have two other meetings to do, so. Okay? Just from, oh.
Do we intend to collect the, do we intend to collect the challenges or, or kind of our future plans in the next meeting session?
Yeah, so the next meeting is, the next meeting specifically is about challenges, where we want to go next over five years. And then the meeting after that is the action plan, so how can we get there, what are different things that could be done to get to there? And that could be anything from, from capabilities, to staff, to, to facilities.
So, so then if the prior other closed meetings have been discussed, can that be shared with us before that?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we shared that at our board meeting last, just a couple days ago, where we had, what the board, what the board members had in committee. There was a meeting that we had, a special meeting much like this, but with the administrators that was on Monday before the board meeting. That was an official meeting, so we'll have minutes. Our goal is to have those minutes that we can approve Monday's board, board meeting so that it can be then publicized. And same with the meeting here, where each meeting that we have, we're going to collect the minutes, it has to be approved by the board, and then it can be disseminated. So there's going to be two ways. One, it's going to be on the website for anybody to see, and then also from a listserv, from the participants, they'll get a, they'll get a formal email with a PDF of the minutes. So then we'll use that. Mr. Doug.
You heard from our visitor that inviting the students, the current students or somebody would be nice. Now, I was just thinking that last, in the last board meeting, I think we found out that there are a couple of ex-students who became faculty.
Yeah.
Or teachers.
Yeah.
So maybe if we can extend that invitation to them.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Just from, just from a round of applause, how many people thought that this was a valuable work for their time? And then, and then just to formally close the meeting, this is for the board members, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Go to the second. And all in favor? All right. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, and we'll see you on October 21st.